We quickly move on to the next session, which is Panel on Reimagining Indo-Pacific Trade Connectivity, Digital Innovation, and Sustainable Supply Chain for a Resilient Future. And I would quickly call upon the panelists on the dais. Professor Dr. Rajitav R. Choudhury, Professor Emeritus and Head Department of Economics, Adamas University, and also the Chairperson of our Economics Affairs National Committee. He is the moderator of the session. I'd call, request Mr. R. Srinivas Nayak, Chief Commissioner, Kolkata Customs. Mr. Navnit Narayan, Whole-Time Director and CEO of Haldia Petrochemicals Limited, and also Vice President of BCCI. Commodore Sujit Samadhar, Visiting Fellow, Research and Information Systems for Developing Countries, RIS. Sri S. Ramakrishna, Director, Balaji Marine Private Limited and Advisor, triple F AI. And Sri R. Rajans is the Traffic Manager of Shamar Prashat Mukhajji Port Authority. Can I request everyone to take their seats please on the dais? Yep.
I welcome all of you as Chairperson of the National Economic Affairs Committee of BCCI. And this is the third edition of Indo-Pacific Conclave, Economic Conclave, which was earlier Indian Economic Conclave, it's expanded now. Naturally, the scope has expanded. So, so are different points of view, it's much wider now in that sense. And in fact, we have a distinguished panel, I will introduce it in short. You will find it on the screen as well, the details. And in this session, the name, the overall theme is Reimagining Indo-Pacific Trade Connectivity, Digital Innovation, and Sustainable Supply Chains for a Resilient Future. Big theme. And there are different types of, different sections of discussion. To my mind, in the last two conclaves, Indo-Pacific Economic Conclaves, we heard Indian point of view basically, not so much about the overall Indo-Pacific scope of the Indo-Pacific trade. I hope some of our very valuable speakers will touch upon this, going beyond India, the possibilities and scope of what we have for the accelerating the Indo-Pacific trade. And all of us know by now that it's a very growing region, a region where we have endless possibilities in a way. It's a huge economic power, the whole Indo-Pacific in that sense. Many challenges as well. Most of its trade, as you can understand, is maritime. So, we need lot of good connectivity in the maritime trade infrastructure. And otherwise, we need digitalization of trade just to make trade compatible with each other. Because some of these countries have digitalized perhaps in a faster pace than India. So, we have to be at par. Then, the biggest scope of trade now lies in supply chain, global supply chain. And as you can understand, all these shocks which are coming through tariff and somewhat uncertain geopolitical scenarios can be mitigated, can be absorbed through global supply chain. Because in a way, within Indo-Pacific, if we can concentrate on global supply chain within what ASEAN has done, invigorating the supply chain among themselves, one can absorb shocks which are coming from outside. India is a latent trend, I would say, in the supply chain, but it's going forward quite vigorously. And I want to hear a little bit more on that maybe from this panel. And then the future question, sustainable trade is a very important thing. Because not only that, we have to sustain ourselves, we have to be compatible with the standards which are set for sustainable trade by more developed partners which we have in the Indo-Pacific regions, developed in the sense of economic development for that matter. And then we have so much possibility of blue economy, the economy which lies below the ocean. And lot of attention now is going on this blue economy, how the blue economy can strengthen. And there is so much blue, as you can understand, in this whole Indo-Pacific region. With this very short comments, I might just touch upon when other very eminent speakers whom we have today. With this, I would invite first of our speakers. I go by the way I am given this list and I call upon Mr. R. Srinivas Nayak, Chief Commissioner of Kolkata Customs. And very short introduction, you will get the details here. He was from the Indian Revenue Service from 1992. Worked as Assistant Collector of Central Exise at Raj Court, Jamnagar in Gujarat. He worked as Director of Government of India and the Minister of Shipping during 2019 to 2014. Member of Governing Board of Indian Ports Session, Member of FIEO. Worked as Commissioner of Customs at Chennai Seaport. And then he worked as Principal Commissioner, Audit Commissionerate and Airport Commissionerate, Chennai Customs Zone. At present, he is working as Chief Commissioner of Kolkata, Chief Commissioner of Customs Kolkata Zone. Very experienced person. And I don't want to restrict him, but given our time, I would say that if the initial presentation is limited to something like six to seven minutes, if that is okay with you, because that's, you know, the time constraint is very important, then we can take questions and you can come back again with your own points of view. And I would put this question to Mr. Nayak. Mr. Nayak has a wide sort of experience, he can talk of many things. And I just wanted to limit him to something and he agreed that he might have, he might speak on these things. My question is, what role do you foresee in digital transformation of the trade channels, on the expansion of trade in the Indo-Pacific region? You might concentrate on this and maybe veer a little bit around whatever you feel is important in that way. Over to you, Mr. Nayak.
Thank you very much, Dr. Rajitav. Esteemed panelists sitting on the dais, ladies and gentlemen. So, I've been actually asked to talk on digital transformation of the trade channels and the expansion of trade in the Indo-Pacific region. So, as you are aware, the customs cooperation is vital in today's era of digitized supply chain, new technologies, and accelerating scale and speed of goods movement. The customs administrations must adapt to the expanding globalized economy and work together to achieve economic development and prosperity. The recent years, India has been part of customs cooperation with different countries. Several bilateral, multilateral agreements to motivate regional integration and the trade facilitation. Countries in the Indo-Pacific region are involved in free trade agreements, FTAs, with major agreements including the Regional Comprehensive Economic Partnership, RCEP, the ASEAN-India Free Trade Agreement, Free Trade Area, Indo-Pacific Economic Framework, which is focusing on pillars like supply chain, clean energy, rather than comprehensive tariff reduction. Asia-Pacific Trade Agreement is another regional preferential trade agreement in this area. So, it has ten ASEAN members. It's a world's largest regional FTA, covering these ten members of ASEAN, Australia, China, Japan, South Korea, New Zealand. Then we have ASEAN-India Free Trade Area, which is systematically reduces tariffs and trade barriers between India and the ten ASEAN states in the areas of goods, services, and investments. Asia-Pacific Trade Agreement, which is also called APTA, it's a preferential trade agreement that aims to promote intra-regional trade through tariff concessions and evolving to include investment, services, and trade facilitation. Now, Indo-Pacific Economic Framework, which we are now discussing today and tomorrow, is US-led, newer economic initiative with fourteen members. Four members are from Quad Countries, South Korea, New Zealand, Fiji, and seven ASEAN countries. It is not a traditional FTA, but an economic framework focusing on four pillars, supply chain resilience, clean energy, taxation, and fair trade. So, India's role here is very active in expanding its trade relationship with Indo-Pacific, with significant trade with ASEAN and Australia. It is also signatory to RCEP and ASEAN-India Free Trade Agreement. Now, this Indo-Pacific Economic Framework includes initiatives to enhance digital customs and trade facilitation through collaboration and adoption of advanced technologies to improve efficiency and security. Now, customs being the organization working on the international border, trade facilitation and mutual trade agreements with other partner countries are very important. Now, trade facilitation, as you are aware, broadly refers to policies that target administrative barriers impending trade. In practice, this usually means improving the efficiency of existing trade regulations, implementing new technologies relevant to trade, and addressing emerging structural changes in trade. Trade facilitation targets the operational hurdles to trade and reduces the compliance cost traders shoulder when they engage with the governmental agencies. Now, CBAC, Central Board of Indirect Taxes and Customs, over the period of time, over the period of years, has implemented some innovative practices for facilitation of trade in a seamless and secured manner to drive operational excellence and leverage technological advancements to escalate a more transparent, predictable, and facilitative ecosystem for businesses in cross-border trade. These include some initiatives like Single Window Interface for Trade, it's also called SWIFT, Faceless Assessment, Direct Port Delivery, DPD, Direct Port Entry, which have improved the time taken for release of the import and export consignments. All these initiatives have reemphasized a strong commitment of customs for a responsible and responsive cross-border trade administration. And another scheme which is very important for the partnering countries is the policy which is supporting the Indo-Pacific region and enhance mutual economic connectivity is Economic, Autorized Economic Operator, AUO Scheme, Trusted Trader Program. AUO programs certify the market participants in the nation's customs administration as trustworthy. They do this by verifying that the authorized participant maintains an adequate level of supply chain security so that customs screenings for exports and exports can be expedited. In US, this program is called Customs Trade Partnership Against Terrorism, because their concern for terrorism activities is more. For AUO program, participants exporting becomes cheaper and quicker than those not in AUO program, making it an important part of trade facilitation. Although major economies in the region already maintain some form of AUO program, India has rolled out an entity, entity-based facility. Earlier, it was called Accredited Client Program, now it is revised and it is being called as Autorized Economic Operator. So, some of the features are that, you know, AUO, once they are registered, they get DPD.
Sir, can you round up in one minute, sir?
Yeah, yeah. So, I'm just finishing, another two minutes. So, DPD for import consignments to ensure their consignments just in time, the clearances are allowed from the hook, means from the terminal itself, and they can directly take to their warehouses. DPE for export consignments, you know, which are factory stuff, then special focus on small and medium scale entities. Any entity with twenty-five transactions in a year, you know, they become eligible. The provision of deferred payment of duty, once they are accredited, you know, the duties can be paid once in fifteen days, and their export incentives are, you know, fast track. Then, there are many other, you know, facilities. So, this AUO scheme has also got, you know, MRA, this is Mutual Recognition Arrangement. So, AUO in India will also get some sort of facilitation in other countries also. So, this will help in a unify AUO programs across different nations such that, you know, participants in one nation's program can seamlessly access the benefits associated with accreditation in other, in other nation also. So, India has got about six thousand, six thousand AUOs, you know, registered. They are put into three different categories, tier one, tier two, tier three, and some logistic operators are also given this AUO status. And we have already signed this MRA, Mutual Recognition Arrangement, you know, with twenty countries and some more agreements are also in consideration. So, these are the two aspects I thought which are relevant for international cooperation. So, with this, I'll stop here. Thank you very much for, BCCI for giving me this opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Nayak, for giving a very, I would say, introduction to how the customs is modernized and standardized across this region. And hopefully, seamless trade, as we think, or as we call about, will be, over time, will be lot easier for all the nations in this Indo-Pacific region. Well, the next speaker will be Mr. Navnit Narayan. And let me just very briefly introduce him. Again, you can see everything in the screen. Mr. Narayan is the Whole-Time Director and CEO, Haldia Petrochemicals Limited. All of us are well conversant of that, whoever is in this part of the India. As a board member, CEO, and executive team leader, Navnit has mentioned, mentored and coached business heads and teams across various sectors. Prior to his current role as the WTD and CEO of Haldia Petrochemicals Limited, he has several key positions in leading organizations such as Laika Group, Laika Mobile UK, handling operations across twenty-three countries, Bodafon Idea Limited, Nokia, Wipro BPI and Tata Steel Limited. He's an alumnus from Billingsa Bit Misra and also Northwestern University, Illinois. In addition, he's a British Chevening Scholar at the Leeds University Business School, UK. With, well, with, again, with so much experience of all our speakers, I have to again give my idea, what Mr. Narayan can deliver it. I have chosen something like this, maritime trade is paramount in the Indo-Pacific region. What is your vision about expanding this trade in terms of commodities and routes, Mr. Narayan?
Good afternoon, everyone. You know, when I was looking at the topic and I requested my team to share some pointers for my session here, so I got a lot of data points and I thought I'll not bore you with the data points. So, I was recollecting as I was driving in, I was thinking about this topic. And, you know, a few years back, I was visiting the Angkor Wat Temple in Siem Reap in Cambodia. And it reminded me of the Vijayanagara Empire, which was right from India all the way to Southeast Asia, and they used to do huge amount of trading. And we're talking about early fifteen hundreds, so six hundred years or seven hundred years back. And this is lesson, and why I want to talk about that, is a lesson for all of us here. Those years, Vijayan Nagar Empire was majorly into trading. They used to trade in cotton, because cotton was exported from India, gems, gold was obviously there, and used to import horses, Russian horses, used to import metal that was required. And a huge amount of trade went on during those years of the rule of the Vijayan Nagar Empire. That also crumbled towards the end, because the multiple ports that they were using, they started crumbling, and they couldn't sustain the, the trade and the economy of that empire. And I think it's a lesson for all of us here. If you look at the Indo-Pacific, you know, on one side of the Pacific is the largest economy, and let's not forget them, they are the largest economy, and that is the US. That's one side of the Pacific Ocean. The other side of the Pacific Ocean is the world's largest factory, which is China. And in between, we have large economies of Japan, we have India in a way, we have Malaysia, we had, His Excellency Ambassador was here, and the entire Asian countries, which are very fast-growing economies, well-developed countries, and then we have the ANZ down under. I think even you look at this geography, the growth of the economy in this sector is not, an average world is growing at two percent, this part of the world will grow at more than four to five percent, because the large economies and the large growing economies are in this region. And I think that is the opportunity for us. The second thing is, this part of the world is consuming huge amount of raw materials and minerals. And, and I think clearly because China being there and being the world's factory, it needs lot of raw materials to produce the final product which gets exported to other countries. In spite of what tariff issues that we are having today, those things will settle down. You know, those are, every new government comes in, they want to do what's best for, for their government, which is rightfully, and they are doing that. But things will settle down. But what will not change is the global supply chain. And I think we need to look at that from our perspective. I think when I look back, you know, in the last few decades, and not just last few years, the amount of trade that is happening within this region has been growing at a tremendous pace. But we have limitations. We have lot of limitations on the routes that we use, in terms of the challenges that we have on the sea routes that is there between, let's say, Japan to India and going west from India. Those challenges remain, and they will only get worse as more and more traffic will increase in this route. And I think that's something for us to really look at. When I, when we look at India itself and when I look at Bengal, which we discussed earlier in the, in the session, I think Bengal has, is a gateway for entire Southeast Asia and, and the Eastern Asia into North part of India. Because really, it's a gateway not just to Nepal and, and in the eastern part of the country. I think it's a huge, it's a great position that Bengal has had for last two hundred years. But this was the port of choice, and that grows, and it continues to be a port of choice. And we will see traffic increase, we have to really see how we can gear up to manage the traffic that is increasing. Because when you look at the logistic issues and challenges that we have, in spite of the best efforts, I think the time taken, the congestion that we see, those are coming in the way. And we have to really see how we open up and improve the infrastructure for trade to happen. Trade into, into India and outside India, it is increasing. I think when we look at my own business, we see huge amount of chemicals moving from India, because we don't, we produce lot of chemicals, we don't consume them domestically, and we export into North Asia and East Asia. And that will only increase, because more and more production facilities are coming up in India, and India will become part of the larger Eastern economy. And we'll feed into the large factories, as I call them, which is China and Vietnam and Cambodia and other countries. And India will be part of that, hopefully will be part of that group of countries. I think the growth will continue, and we have to really see how we have the right place and right share in the growth that we are expecting in this region. And I think it's, it boils down to the infrastructure, it boils down to how we digitize, it boils down to how we make things simpler. We cannot have demerages and ships waiting, because the turnaround time has to be much lower than what we are experiencing today. And I think I really want to not take too much of time, I know you wanted to have just opening remarks, but I think that session today, we should focus on what kind of infrastructure we need to build, and how we can digitize so that we can actually have a far more efficient operation, and we are able to leverage our India's position in the trade that we are looking at in, in this region. So, with that, I'll just take a break and allow other speakers to share their thoughts.
Well, thank you, Mr. Narayan. It's, you are not well within time only, you touched upon so many interesting points. I mean, it's all very important, you know, fastest-growing region, so much scope, consume so much of raw materials and intermediate goods, huge possibility of supply chain within. I mean, we can create our supply chain within the region. And then the importance of infrastructure, one can simply, cannot undermine that importance in any way. So, thank you, Mr. Narayan, for very interesting presentation, and possibly during a short question answer, we can come back to this. Well, next, we will have another very important speaker with us, Commodore Sujit Samadhar. And let me just have a very brief introduction of Commodore Samadhar. He's a Visiting Fellow of RIS at present. Commodore Samadhar graduated from IIT Rurki in 1978. Samadhar began his career as an engineer trainee with Tata Consulting Engineers, Mumbai. He has been an international fellow at the JIIA Tokyo, where his thesis, Thinking Proliferation Theoretically, was published by the Non-Proliferation Review. He was awarded the Admiral RD Qatari Fellowship at the United Services Institution, New Delhi, on Defense Development and National Security Linkages in the Indian Context. And again, just to have what I think may be a very appropriate topic for Commodore Samadhar, I'm asking him something like this, that no doubt strengthening long-term stability in trade relations is key to success in Indo-Pacific region, or in whatever you define stability. What is your suggestions on this?
Thank you very much, sir, for your very generous introduction, and thank you, BCCI, for the opportunity to be here. To address this question, I have, you know, put this in three baskets, and, and at the, and that is the foundations of business. I think our chair forgot to mention that I also spent fifteen years doing business with Tata's and with a Japanese company. So, I have a little background on business and the kind of challenges that we have had in, in doing international business. At the core of all business things, there are just three things that all of us in, in this hall want, predictability, credibility, and stability. Whatever is happening, if, if we have that ecosystem in place, we know what's happening is predictable, we understand that, that somebody is telling us something is credible, and there's a stable environment for us to do our business as we want to do it, I think we are good to go. Within this three basic ideas, there are a whole lot of sub-ideas, and I'll run this through very quickly. A mention was made about how do we sustain this chain? And I think at the foundation of this chain is connectivity. And that connectivity is not limited to transportation connectivity, it's also about people-to-people, it's also about digital connectivity, it's also about energy connectivity. India took a big lead on, on the Indian solar, on the International Solar Alliance, and there are many other things. there are many other things that's happening on hydrogen, etc. So, whilst connectivity is important, it is closely linked to security. What we're seeing in the Red Sea, what we're seeing in Gulf of Guinea, what we're seeing in the Panama Canal, what we're seeing in Venezuela, what we're seeing in Mali yesterday, all these are now very important challenges for us in businesses. Because once connectivity linkages are cut, whether it's data cables, there was a disruption on data cables in the Red Sea three days ago, it impacts our business. So, this requires a certain amount of security infrastructure, and that can't be provided by one country, it has to be done by all of us. The second part, of course, is in the connectivity thing, is what is supposed to be carrying this connectivity, and basically what you spoke about, the supply chain resilience, in which basically the idea for all of us in business is to diversify our vendors and diversify our customers, that is the foundation of business, so you're not stuck in one corner. Which means, either you had a model which is one-to-one, or many-to-one, or many, or one-to-many, but today, the business is more structured on many-to-many. And that is that network that businesses have to organize themselves in thinking. We had a very nice presentation on the customs, which is part of the institutional mechanism, which feeds into credibility. So, if you have every day a changing rule on custom tariffs, every day a new QCO which is brought in, every day a new concept of port state control is brought in, then you know that disturbs businesses, and that does not make sustainable business sense. In the morning, we had some, in the afternoon, early sessions, we also spoke about a very important element of business today: sustainability. We are going to run out of raw materials. This morning, my Pishi Moshai told me that one man requires four trees in his lifetime for him to just breathe oxygen. So, businesses have to now be cognizant of this fact, where are your materials coming from, where is your feedstock coming from, and how can that be brought into the economy once again at end of life? Government of India has been working vigorously on this, we have introduced extended producer responsibility on a variety of products, and please note here, that this extends to producers, importers, and brand owners. So, if you are doing business here, you will have to comply with ERP responsibilities, and that is the structure of sustainable businesses. Correlated with that is the requirement of green energy, and any business that you do with Europe today, you have to be mindful of C-BAM, you have to be mindful of scope funds, scope two, scope three emissions, your compliance to various ESG regulations, etc. Apart from that, you have to be mindful to the geopolitical uncertainties. I think yesterday, we had a very nice conversation with the European Union, and I think that's taking some steps forward. But clearly, businesses have to steer this. In the morning, we heard, in the afternoon session, we heard this during the inaugural session, that ideas have to come from you, from this community of businessmen to government to say, you know, we want these reforms, we want this, we want that. You ask, and let the government then decide what it can do or cannot do, but it's your job to ask. Technology, we spoke about, here, just two very quick points, we are now building a lot of ports, there's a hell of a lot of investment in shipbuilding. Just to give you an idea, if you have to meet the Maritime Amritkal Vision 2047, do you know how much shipbuilding do we have to do? $2 trillion, 16 lakh crores at a minimum. And that investment is not there. So, similarly, if you're going to build ports, there are two ports which are coming up, they're already worth 160,000 crores today, that money has to come. So, we need to find out alternative means of finance, and one of the smartest ways of financing today is tokenization of real-world assets that uses blockchain technologies. This is where businesses who are in the EPC business, on the infrastructure side, have to think about how can this be roped into sustainable supply chains. Last point here is, of course, we spoke about digital trade and all that, but we have to also remember, we have to get out of this gems and jewelry, textile, and that sort of thing. We are now high-tech guys. We've been exporting iPhones, we just exported 750,000 automobiles, we're the world's largest tractor manufacturing company, the second-largest automobile company, we will be exporting automobiles. So, there's a lot of things that will come, and all these automobiles are not made completely in India, things have to come from abroad, which requires capital goods, it needs intermediate goods, and it needs many other components which have to come from different parts of it. So, I don't want to take too much time, but these are couple of ideas that I had, but I'll be happy to take questions when it comes. But in conclusion, I can say that we are living in, as we say, interesting times. And it's up to us, both as business and in governance and in think tanks, to put our shoulder to the task and find out what are the interventions that we want so that these businesses become sustainable and our businesses grow. Thank you very much for your patient understanding.
Thank you, Commodore Samadhar. Very interesting points, in fact, you talked about sustainability is the main issue, no doubt, we talk all the time about sustainability. Any kind of disruptions, wherever it happens, on the ground, under the sea, anywhere, is a problematic thing. And rapid changes anywhere in any sphere of our business is not desirable. Also, in government policies also, it's not desirable, the policies change too much. You talked about, and that's very important, that at one point, India, the slogan was only roti kapra, agriculture and textiles, we should move out of that. It's a high-tech things, and we are moving into high-tech things. That's the future, and that's a huge future which awaits us. We have the manpower, we have the research capability, and we have a very supportive government policies nowadays. So, let's hope for the best, that we will move into that very coveted field of high-tech world, blockchain technology and whatever we call it, and we will move forward. Thank you, Commodore Samadhar. Well, our next speaker is Mr. Ramakrishna. Mr. S. Ramakrishna is Director, Balaji Maryline Private Limited, and advisor FFFAI. He's a postgraduate in Materials Management and Export Marketing from Indian Institute of Foreign Trade. He has more than four and a half decades of working experience in extreme trade. Currently, he is Managing Director of Balaji Maryline Private Limited. And again, you know, I don't want to limit anybody within the frame I have thought about, but in order to have less overlap in talks, I just will suggest something to Mr. Ramakrishna as well. And I want something to hear about how a resilient supply chain is the ultimate dream of any regional trade groupings. Can you give your considered opinion on how to strengthen this in this context?
Thank you very much. I first of all thank the PCCID and the panelists for me to be here and talking about the, answering the question. Sir, I would like to start with your opening remark where you said that the India lacks on digital, or probably other countries are superior. With my experience, I can tell you, sir, especially working with the customs, what the Chief Commissioner said, and we travel all across the world so much in the, in our industry, we are at least 200% better than any country. That's my opening remark on this. The, as far as the resilience is concerned, sir, India being a large country and with the multi-level population, from right from the poorest to the richest, the very fact that we are members of Quad, ASEAN, IPEF, etc., it shows how important the business is, how important our logistic industry need to be. Especially when you, I was just going through some notes where the Quad, the basic thing what they are talked about is, their focus has been the maritime security and freedom of navigation, joint naval exercise, cybersecurity, supply chain resilience, climate and infrastructure projects, technology collaboration in infrastructure investments. So, these are the very things that we are doing day in and day out. Therefore, it is that even before what the others have started thinking about it, India is into it. When we talk about the technology front, what the Chief Commissioner talked about, the various, the various schemes the government has come in, I am a user, so I can tell with confidence, the kind of resilience we have, kind of facilitation we have in the customs, we are really, the very basic purpose of our LPA coming from '44 to '38 shows the kind of a development, infrastructure development, as well as the facilitation by the customs. And the other department, today, we talk about the, on export GST refund within fortnight, and probably drawback within three days. So, that is a kind of a technology we have, that doesn't mean that, you know, we are, the customs are not private to the, whether the right amount is being given or not, whether it is, the money is going to the right people or not, correctly it is going or not. So, there are various parameters which have been looked into, and it is actually counter-checked for each and every transactions. So, more importantly, as far as the resilience of logistic is concerned, our track and trace mechanism, I must say, is weak. It is weak, and we need to strengthen that, probably it will give more confidence on the global friend, that they know exactly where the cargo is. The second point is that, that is close to my heart, is that as such a big nation, we do not have our own shipping companies, we do not have our own containers. Today, more than 95% of the container is manufactured in China. We talk about so many schemes, but are, I'm standing at a place where steel is manufactured, and we do not have cotton steel for manufacturing containers. That gives me a little anguish. If we have to sustain the cost, then we should have our own shipping. If we have to sustain the cost of the container, today, the second-hand container is what we purchase in India is at least twice the cost of the new containers in China. So, if we really have to globally compete, and India has to come to that level, I think there is a long way to go, but we have enough strength to do everything. Thank you so much.
Well, thank you, Mr. Ramakrishna. Lots of hope for us, and in fact, port efficiency is certainly, I didn't really mean that India is lagging behind everybody, or every good port which we can see around, possibly we are behind ports like Singapore, still to go. So, 200% more efficient, maybe for some of the countries, but not for all, that's what I meant. And absolutely right, technically, we have gone ahead with like refund and etc. very quick in that sense. But globally, we have to be competitive in certain things, like shipping, as you said, container production. We can do that with support from the government and support from the market as well. The government cannot do everything, the market is there, and the market chooses the most efficient, and we can be efficient. There is every reason to believe that we'll be efficient in future as well. And track and trace, very important, and that's one of the major things for a good supply chain to work. Thank you again, Mr. Ramakrishna, for your very insightful talk. Last but not the least, we haven't forgotten you, by the way, you are there and we will hear you with patience. Mr. Rajans, our last speaker of this panel, and let me have again, details are there, I will just give you a little bit of introductions. Sri Rajans is Traffic Manager of Shama Prasad Mukherjee Port Authority, SMPA. As a professional in the port and logistics, 34 years of experience, have held leadership position as Head of Traffic Operation in Shama Prasad Mukherjee Port, Kolkata, Kolkata in fact, and Senior Deputy Manager in Railway Operations at the whole Yerdog complex. Currently serving as the Traffic Manager at Kolkata Dock System, Shama Prasad Mukherjee Port, Kolkata, overseeing critical operations, including coordination of wagon and vessel activities, signaling, and telecommunications freight management. In fact, I am shortening the introduction, you can read it over here, just to save time. Well, again, all of you have knowledge, it's cutting across, I mean, all of you, if I put you together, perhaps you can speak for the whole day, to the benefit of the audience. So, just to limit our discussion, if I can ask Mr. Rajans, what trade facilitating measures may be thought for ports, enhance Indo-Pacific trade? If you can tell us something on that, along with other things, maybe?
Thank you so much for giving this opportunity, thank you, BCI. I will run through a small presentation before coming to this, this is small so that it keeps trend. This is the Indo-Pacific Economic Framework, everybody knows, and the, how the disruption that we have been talking, the area of the, I bring before this thing, this is the, where your, the total cargo, the total area, how it is governing, and what is the critical role SMPK plays in this area? This is what we are doing as on today, we can go on and on, but because the time is short, what I will try to delve upon, that our, the first speaker also spoke, that key, how we are going to improve the digitization, NLP Marine, Ice Gates Integration, One Nation One Port process, and furthermore, the economic framework that right now is governing, even today, if I run through, I was just going through the DGCAS site, and we found the figures, the export to Indo-Pacific countries through Kolkata Port, how it has changed during this period, that gives you the correct empirical key, how the situation is improving, but it is a 26-page report, so going through, but there has been a sudden change from '23, '24 to '24, '25. We have trade relations Kolkata Port, China, United States of America, Japan, Korea, Republic Australia, Canada, Chile, Russia, Philippines, Peru, New Zealand, Brunei, Fiji Island, Mali. All these top countries, what are the major commodities, and what are the things that we have been handling so far? That has given us insight key how to, that is the question that our earlier speakers speak, that we need to have the infrastructure in place, infrastructure, software infrastructure, hardware as well, the port capacity needs to grow. India wants to achieve in Amritkal 2047, 10 billion tons of capacity, what is the present? We have 2 billions, show five times growth, how it is going to come, and how this is going to happen. This is, I will limit myself to SMPK, where what we are doing right now, as I said, digitization, we are the one port where you don't need to go to the port for doing the business, you can do from the home. We have a very good relationship with customs, and where the integration between customs and port is seamless, the most, all the strategic partners, you have the access of the port operating management system through your home. What we are doing right now, we are developing mechanization through the, this is an old, 154-year-old port, one of the sister port is also approaching half of its age, so what, how we are So what, how we are going to grow our capacity? We are going to grow our capacity by mechanization. We have already the eighteen-seventies Khideri Port, Century Port has signed an concession agreement and they are going for this thing. Whenever the time is short, please remind me, I will stop right that moment. We have JSW Port, JSW has invested in seven and eight. We are coming up with outer terminal at Kolkata with one, three and four and five, all will be, will be landlord port. We are going to, we have introduced night navigation through the system development through the Antwerp Ports and IT Madras Collaboration. We are going to develop Balagar Terminal recently. We are going for a transloading arrangements of containers at Diamond Harbour. So all these things taken together is putting this port in a position, how we are getting ready. We have multiple projects pipelined under port late development for SMPK. Enhancing export and import channels for SMPK to facilitate Indo-Pacific trade. I will not be reading so much because of positivity of time. This is just for KDS, how this, the countries, what is the figure that we have just collected, collected and compiled and also I sent to my, this PCCI key, the reports. To how we can streamline movement of, while leveraging free trade agreements that is happening through this. Here I, it reminds me, Mr. Purie was saying, how the Nepal, Nepal, we are the port, we will be serving this port, we have been and we will be because we are the nearest, closest and we understand each other's requirements. We have an agreement with ACMP, with Bangladesh, agreement with the use of Chhattogram and Mungla Port. We have some collections with Myanmar, we have developed Sitwe Port. And in this reason, Kolkata Port, West Bengal being the center and Kolkata Port being the only port in this West Bengal, we have the strategic presence and importance. As the time is short, I will like to limit my thing.
Short really is short, one minute for.
Yeah, yeah, just, I am through, this is the linkages, thank you.
Thank you very much. I can cut you short, but your words resonate, so don't worry. People must be having, you know, hard and soft, software, the hard software and the soft one, very important thing, digitization you talked about and we heard very good things about what your SMPK is doing. So we can be hopeful that this can really be a major point for the East Act Policy, maritime way, maritime trade, if we can do it, connecting the land and the sea routes through SMPK. Well, I thank all the authors and now we can have maybe seven minutes till six o'clock. Can we have a question answer? Six o'clock? So very short-pointed questions and if you can identify to whom you are asking, then they can answer it. But be short so that others can get time. Somebody must start. Yeah, please.
Yeah, this is not a question, sir. This is just to say something to Ramakrishna, sir. What he said that so far as the digital and technology part is concerned, definitely we are, if we are not better, then we are definitely at par and much better than of most of the other countries, at par with the developed countries. I give you the today's example of mine itself, that I got my income tax summary assistance assessment under section one forty-three, subsection one, within thirty-eight hours of my filing. And not only this, therefore yesterday, sixteenth, I forgot to file it on fifteen, I got the message that your ITR is, ITR two is under draft most, please final it. Thank you.
Sir, my question is to Honorable Chief Commissioner, sir. While long leaves have been taken in customs digitization as well as the trusted taxpayer schemes like AEO, MOVER, et cetera. Sir, however, like GST, there is a, there is a long history of classification issues in customs, which unsettles the settled positions. Also for taxpayers and importers who have been there since long, can we in customs also, where there is a settled position of using a particular HSN code for a particular goods since long, ten years, fifteen years, have a scheme on as-is, where is basis? If at all, customs department finds out that there is an anomaly, whatever has happened in the past has happened, from now, it will be this HSN code.
So you may be aware, you know, if you have any apprehension about any dispute in classification, advance ruling mechanism is there. So you can apply for advance ruling and whatever ruling given by the advance ruling authority, it will be binding on the importer and customs also. That is one. And another thing is, you may be aware that all the import consignments are assessed by the risk management system. So a particular classification is going on and generally, you know, ninety percent of the consignments are facilitated and they are picked up by RMS only. If the consistently the same classification is going on, RMS does not pick up. And the dispute comes only when there is a difference found. So unphysical examination officer finds it slightly different, then only the dispute arises.
I'm talking about post-clearance audit, sir.
Post-clearance audit.
There if something comes up, fifteen years something is happening, now post-clearance audit has happened and the auditor feels, no, no, not this HSN code you have to use, why HSN code?
See, post-clearance audit is happening mostly for authorized economic operators. So your consignment is allowed and subsequently the audit is raising this thing. And there is elaborate procedure, you know, so there is a consultation process. First they will give you consultation letter, then you can explain, you will be given a opportunity to explain it also. So you explain it and then you can settle it. So when there is no settlement, then only a shoka notice is coming. So what I suggest is that, you know, if you have any apprehension, you go to advance ruling, that is the best. So advance ruling is very popularly used in US. Unfortunately, in India, people are not going to advance ruling.
Hi, good evening. Thank you to each and every speaker for this enlightening and engaging session. So my question would be to Mr. Narayan or whosoever want to take that. So I run a foundation in four countries in South Asia where we help industries in bilateral discussions and also we empower labors to join the workforce. So my question would be given Bengal's strategic position as India's gateway to Indo-Pacific, what operational efficiency do you prefer and the strategic innovations should industries in the region prioritize to enhance trade competitiveness and integrate more strongly into the Indo-Pacific supply chains?
Thank you very much. And I think if you look at from industry perspective, it's really back to business. What does a customer look for? Looks for quality, looks for cost and looks, as he talked about, being predictable, being assured of supply. And I think it's for the industry to really see how we are cost competitive, how we are producing the best and, and we make it available. And I think that's the only way we can increase more trade. So it's not just, you know, support from the government, all those are financial measures. But at the end of it, what matters to the business is what you produce and what you sell. And I think it's for all of us in the industry who are into manufacturing, to focus on that to remain competitive and I think, I think that's the only way to really succeed.
Last question. Privilege of being the last but important member who asks a question. Well, in that case, in fact, I end this panel discussion with a lot of hope, that whatever hindrances were there in technology, in regulations, these are rapidly taken care of. Things are progressing and we have, in, of late, we have understood what the stability of policies and stability in business really means. We are going very strongly for that. We have progressed with digitization, we have progressed with, you know, logistics, the importance of supply chain and every step gradually is taken both by the industry, the business and supported by government policies. So there is an integrated approach which is gradually coming up in our country, where unfortunately things were piecemeal in most of the cases and that's where the outcome was not desirable as we predicted. With this, I thank all our very valued speakers to come here and speak and we'll move over to the next session.
Before you do that, sir, we needed to do a really pleasant task. And for that, if I may kindly request our president designate, Mr. Obijit Rai, to kindly come up on the dais and hand over a token of our appreciation to Mr. R. Srinivas Naik, Chief Commissioner, Kolkata Customs. Ladies and gentlemen, just to make you feel a little better, we have high tea immediately after this proceedings get over today upstairs at the lounge, so you can clap a little louder. Yeah, next, sir, we have Mr. Navneet Narayan. So if you could kindly also hand over our token of appreciation to Mr. Narayan. Okay. Now, thank you, sir. Thank you so much. Now, if I can request Professor Dr. Ajit Varajchoudry to hand over a token of our appreciation to Sri R. Rajans. Then to Mr. S. Ramakrishna. Yes, sir. And finally to Komodre Shujit Samadhar, sir. Yes, there he is. With this, we conclude this panel and we can have a joint group photograph of the panelists together. Can we pose for that, please?